Do you want that? I know she, before you start.
Yeah, I want to.
Are you good tonight?
No. I'm gonna talk about voice chat and all stuff. For April 9th, 2015, meeting in the Foster Town Council for the rise for the fund of the ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcements, I have a meeting from the Secretary of State's open meetings website indicating that this agenda was posted on April 7th at 6:05 PM. So we're on compliance with the rules. The other announcements. I would like to announce that we did receive the bulldozer that we acquired through the less appropriate, it arrived today. It's from the federal government at no cost other than transportation, which I believe was $5,000. So a $10,000 piece of equipment. I mean, thanks to the chief for putting in for that. Yes, chief?
Now, I just want to add, that's an addition part. That is, in the total, we added it up today, 680,000 dollars worth of equipment.
$10,000 for less than $5,000. Okay, public comment. Mr. Kevin Donovan.
Yep. Hi.
Hello.
I'll introduce myself first. My name's Kevin Donovan, been living in Foster for the past 18 years. Grew up in Green, moved to Maine, moved back here to take care of my elderly folks. And the reason for me coming tonight, it's my understanding that there's supposed to be a vote in the council on Resolution 2015, Act 4. Is that correct?
Could you tell me what number on the agenda that is?
I don't have the agenda.
You're referring to the tax breaks?
I am.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. And what item on the agenda is that despite my numbers?
It's under F, under new business.
7F. Okay.
Okay.
And I wanted to speak about that for a minute. In reading through the text of this, at present, it's based on somebody's age or physical disability, and moving forward, the lone and children, we get the discretion of the council for tax breaks for the elderly. And based on that, I just had a couple of comments. I wouldn't be speaking publicly too often. So, like I said, I read through the resolution a few times, and to say it concerns me would be an understatement. So I wanted to come here tonight to try to understand what the perceived benefit is with changing this law as it stands. I know the folks here, you folks, probably didn't necessarily do diligence to quantify exactly what members of our town would be impacted by the changes that are being proposed, but just in case you haven't, I wanted to just take a minute and do that. Per the 2010 census, there are a total of 658 people in this town, 12.2% that are 65 and older. Of the same census, 88.7 of those people, 88.7% of those people live in their own homes, and 77% of them are family households. So doing the math, there are 572 people over 65 in their own homes, 77%, 440, are people that live with their spouse, 132 live alone. So collectively, this change will impact the tax bill of 352 homes. I for one think it's reprehensible to pass an ordinance that would attempt to raise revenues for the town on the backs of assinors. It's also my opinion that the current law provides a small portion of our population, a small sense of security, that they won't be taxed out of their homes. I'm sure you folks who framed this resolutions have the best intentions, but I believe it presents many more significant risks than any perceived benefit. And before the council votes on it, I'd like each of you to think for a moment and ask how, ask yourself how such a resolution would impact your folks if they lived in town. Thank you.
We will have, I'm sure, extensive conversation when we get to that.
Yes.
And Mr. Rogers, you signed up and said you wanted to say something more?
Yeah, I got an email just after, from Mr. Chippendale. I'd like to read into the record because it kind of concerns me on safety issues and stuff, so I think it's kind of important, and I'd like to have it on the next agenda. This was addressed to Mr. Lewis and honorable members of the town council, and it goes on to say, "One of the many things that makes our community and other small communities like ours such special places to live is the way that everyone helps each other when there are situations that cannot be easily taken care of alone by one person." Much of the same way that people in our communities are so willing to lend aid to other community members, our community as a whole has a longstanding tradition of working with the communities that surround us. Our fire departments assist each other in times of need, our police departments coordinate efforts when there is a crisis. We work together because we know that this is a unique community, and we have a better position to help a neighboring community in certain circumstances. And those communities will most probably be able to help ours in other areas where they are better suited than we are in tackle a particular, to tackle a particular issue. As I understand it, there has been a longstanding agreement between Foster and Western Coventry, where due to the bridge weight limits on Bob's Hill, forced to plow the stands a half-mile section of Bob's Hill Road that is actually in Coventry, and Coventry actually plows three to four mile stretch of powder road. Our communities have also helped each other by borrowing equipment from Coventry that Foster doesn't own, and on many occasions, we've been able to borrow salt and sand from Coventry when we have run out, and they still have stock. I was shocked when the DPW department in Coventry told me that the longstanding agreement has been nullified by the Foster Town Council. I won't claim to have all the details on this, and I actually hopefully that this is not the such case, and is merely great blind father. However, in this, if this is the case, I would implore the council to reconsider this decision because our communities pull together in emergencies in special situations such as the bridge limitations. We emerge a much stronger knowing that we can count on each other to fill the gaps when the times are tough. I would appreciate if this would be cleared up as for me, so that I can truly be informed about the situation. I'd like to have this on the next agenda because this is news to me. I know we've had situations where someone's made a decision, like, we're not going to plow the roads for four inches, and I hope this isn't one of them where somebody took it upon themselves to do this. So I'd like to have it put on the next agenda and find out what's going on with this letter, if it is actually truthful, and if something was done by somebody on this council to overstep their bounds again and do something that wasn't warranted.
Very good, it'll be on the next agenda. Okay, that is everyone who signed up for public comment. Next item, minutes from March 26th.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from March 26th as presented.
Second? Hang on. Discussion? Hearing none? Yes, yeah, you seconded and asked in discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, carry your hand mistily. Warrants, payroll warrant number 38.
I make a motion that we accept payroll warrant number 38, and the amount is $27,745.51.
Second? Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, carry your hand mistily. Payroll warrant 39.
I make a motion that we accept payroll warrant number 39, and the amount is $26,649.78.
Second? Mr. Hawes, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, carry your hand mistily. General warrant number 18.
I make a motion that we accept general warrant number 18, and the amount is $93,658.88.
Second? Discussion on the warrant? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, carry your hand mistily. General warrant number 18.
I make a motion that we accept general warrant number 18, and the amount is $93,658.88.
Second? Discussion on the warrant? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, carry your hand mistily. Old Business, appointment of EMA director. It interviews another day, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Sharon Cotter, Director of EMA.
Second? Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, carry your hand mistily. Appointment of Assistant EMA Director?
I make a motion that we appoint Gunter, and I've forgotten his last name.
Gunter Bay?
Gunter Bay, thank you. I make a motion that we appoint Gunter Bay as Assistant EMA Director.
Second? Second, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion, carry your hand mistily. Appointing of Assistant EMA Director?
I make a motion that we appoint Gunter, and I've forgotten his last name.
Gunter Bay?
Gunter Bay, thank you. I make a motion that we appoint Gunter Bay as Assistant EMA Director.
Second? Second, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I didn't make that, I did have a question about this situation, so why I'm gonna not vote on this because of...
Abstention. Okay. Motion varies four, zero, and one abstention. DPW, Plainfield Fire. This letter was put together with respect to a report received from the Engineering Board and DPW's participation in a fire. I'm not Plainfield Pike, not that they said it, but actually...
Really? The engineering?
This did not. The Engineering Board minutes recognized them, and then this letter was written in response to that, to recognize the Public Works Department. Would anyone like to read this?
Sure. Mr. Cardill, the Foster Town Council would like to recognize you and your department for the instrumental assistance you provided the town volunteer fire departments in extinguishing the Plainfield Pike house fire from February 2015. We are sure that without your willingness to step up and assist, things could have been much worse. Again, thank you, your assistance was well worth the time and investment, and on behalf of the Town Council, I want you to know that we really appreciate your efforts. Sincerely, John Lewis.
Is there a motion to approve this letter and send that on? I ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the letter referencing the DPW at Plainfield Pike Fire on February 23rd, 2015.
Second? Second, if I missed the Hawes, discussion?
I'd like to add a little bit, I think we might have missed the vote on this to some extent, actually to a logic extent. This fire happened during the work week, during old business hours of the DPW, who were out in the trucks when it happened, but I think we really should have brought the attention to the guy who's retired, who's sitting at home, that ran out of his house, or the guy who's in his greenhouse getting ready to make a living in the spring, to sell his pots and plants to customers, or the guy who's trying to rest on his day off, or the person who's trying to get some sleep before he goes to work. Stopped everything they did, and run, and put their lives on the line, and ran into a burning building for nothing, not a single penny. We missed the boat. I mean, it's all well and good, we tell our DPW guys, "Great job for plowing, and great job for taking radar and giving tickets," but...
Mr. Rogers, I agree.
It didn't go far out.
I am the one who formulated this letter, I was the one who asked if we could do the letter, and honestly, I thought we're gonna miss somebody, and we missed a lot of people. We missed the dispatchers, I saw the video on YouTube, we missed the volunteer firemen, yes, I agree, we missed several people, but I also think that...
What video on YouTube?
There was an audio video on YouTube, when I searched where the fire was. I don't know who posted it, but somebody did.
It's true.
But it was, I agree, there are several people, and by writing one letter, I did take a chance on offending other people. So I will take full responsibility for it.
It's just I wanted noted that there's people doing something, putting their lives on the line for nothing.
I don't hope that it's for nothing, and I don't think that it takes away from this letter, I think this letter is fine. It recognizes some people for what they did, it doesn't recognize other folks. Mr. Rogers, if you want to draft a letter to recognize those fire, those fire department personnel, bring it forward to the next agenda, I'd be happy to support that.
It should have been followed this, I thought it should have been.
Well, it's open to you, you're free to pen the letter, and we'll get it, we'll vote on it, and we'll recognize everyone who you think should be right.
I got my input out there, Ron, and that's all it is.
Mrs. Ryder?
No, I just think it's unfortunate that Mr. Rogers took this opportunity to seal the thunder for away from the DPW. This was brought up at the last council meeting and was tabled. There has been ample time put together, and he felt that strongly about the fire, to either mention it, to have it included, or to do it himself, but to rain on the DPW's parade at this particular moment is quite unfair.
Was there a discussion? Mr. Savasino?
Yeah, I'm noticing a scenario that we've been through before, the last one was the planner, I think if, the past planner, not you. You know, we're not supposed to mention names, we're not supposed to belittle people. You people are trying to lead the town forward, and I'd really like to sit here and see you get along. I've been here for, oh, almost 30 years, and sometimes it just gets to be nothing but childish crap. So although Denise is right, and although Gordon's right, I see a scenario picking up where we're gonna start a big brawl over the highway department, and it's a waste of frigging time, run the town!
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of signing, would be signing and transmitting this letter, same advice saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion, carry your hand mistily. Okay, the next item are final changes to the budget, and then the budget announcement. Something, Bill Inspector, I did miss something. Scheduling views for building and zoning official. We did receive one application this week as a result of the letters that Jane sent out, direct marketing to the folks that are certified, a list that we received from the state building officials office. We solicited everyone who was certified for this position, Jane mailed them all, and we received one application, only one, but I thought perhaps we should call this individual in and set up an interview as soon as possible, and I was wondering what the council thought. If you'd like to do this, and if so, then... Sure. I would agree. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would be interested in that.
So what is a, what is a good day for folks to set up an interview? Obviously, if we're gonna do a full council doing it, we have to post it in the forms. Prior to the next meeting? The next meeting is on the 23rd?
Third.
So someday next week?
Yes.
What days, what days work? Let me do it this way, is there any day that doesn't work for anyone next week?
Could we do it like we did with the animated actors, this will be 6:30 before the interview?
I can't, I can get close to 7:00.
I would rather do it on this type of day, just to collect my thoughts.
Usually, the process for appointing a permanent employee versus a sort of a volunteer of a small position is different. We do a background check on employees, and they have to sign off on that, on the day they come in for the interview, to allow us to do that, and that goes to the police chief, and it takes them a couple of days to run that background check, so I'm not really in favor of foregoing that. Well, Thursday's, Thursday's a good day for you?
Yeah.
Thursday, Thursday, the 16th of April?
As long as it's 7 o'clock or later.
7 o'clock, Thursday, the 16th of April?
I'm working till the sun goes down.
You don't plan for that, yeah?
No, but I'll make it...
7 o'clock's okay? Does that work for you, Jane?
Mm-hmm.
You also, should be...
Not bad.
Okay, 7:00 PM, Thursday the 16th, it would be an executive session for interview with the elderly and zoning.
Or maybe open if they would like.
If they would like to.
We both... Maybe they'll be here at the end of the night.
I think here, yeah. Yeah, here, or you want...
Maybe you can build it down home, or here. If you want, maybe it works less formally, than doing it at kitchen.
You have a preference, Jane?
No, I don't have...
Is it easier for you to do it there at town hall?
It doesn't really matter, like the five-minute...
Let's do it at town hall, I think it's easier. So 7:00 PM, executive session, they can opt to have it an open session at town hall, would be the only thing that would be on the agenda. Final changes to the 2015, 2016 budgets, so Kelly has given us a revised budget, there were some changes that had to be done, we got rid of recycling and a few of those things. She's gonna join us here at the table, so the chief can do any updates. This is our last run-through before we adopt. We're adopting the budget this evening, so I'm gonna chat about what is going on since our last meeting, and then if anyone has any more questions, concerns, or ideas for amendment, this will be the time to put them on the table. Okay, Kelly, wait, for the evening's address?
Since the last motion, the public hearing, we discussed, I'd like you to know that we had a more final number on the recycling, so I changed that, that was Department 19, to $66,000.
So that was, that was actually $4,000?
That was reduced.
By $4,000.
There was an error in the calculation of formula for the dispatcher salaries, not the salaries, but the overtime, so I adjusted that to be accurate, and that affected a couple of ones, and I adjusted the dispatcher salaries on one item, that is not really that significant, but to be more accurate with our current standard. The change to offset that increase, because this is set at 4%, was made to capital, so I highlighted that as well.
Those are the things, are there any other departments that were affected?
No other department was affected by me, if you'd like to go over it.
I don't think I have to go to each one individually unless someone on the council wants to raise a particular budget or particular...
I would.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been mulling this over for, since we began, and the solicitor's salary increase, I really just have a hard time with that amount, and I would like to increase the 2015 budget by $5,000, which would reduce that line item by $2,950.
Could you give us a final figure? What's the number that you want in that box?
Instead of, oh, I can see, I don't have my Mac.
Want to change 2015?
I wanted to, instead of 62.5.
Okay.
So it would be 57.5, you lose by $3,950.
It's actually increasing it $3,950?
No, increasing it, let me get my Mac.
If I, to, if I change the amount to 57.5, between 2015 and 16 is 3,390.
What is the final figure?
It's a $5,000 increase. Also over on $5,000.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yes.
So a second? No, a second, motion fails. Is there anything else?
I would like to make a motion, reduce it down to, we're discussing, to what, the subcontract, we hired her out and keep it the same, because I believe, as a subcontractor, she was appointed for a fee for a certain amount of time, which was two years, so I'd make a motion to not increase it at all, and to look at it when the term runs out for the next council to move forward, so it actually wouldn't be increasing it at all, it would be keeping it at the 56, what was it?
53.550.
53.550, which is what she was appointed at, just a few short months ago.
Okay, the run's motion is to reduce it to 53.550, is there a second? Hearing none, motion fails.
Mr. Lewis, can I?
Yes, sir.
Was it a two-year contract?
Not a two-year contract, it's a memorandum of agreement that was...
Okay, I asked a question, you answered, you went to the words.
Any other council members have any other line items or departments they'd like to discuss?
I believe what she lives at, this is the deal, and the new thing is because she's gonna represent every person in this town, and works without contrajting an hour or a day, and I think she's very good on her.
So that's fine, that doesn't require a motion, there's no motion on the table, we got it, man. Other issues?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you do something with the 3% to the building and zoning, the 3% increase in the salary, plus?
That's, no, we didn't change that.
You didn't change?
Right now, the, the increase in the building and zoning official, building and zoning director's salary includes a 3% raise to the base ten, and then the increase in 20 to 24 hours.
Okay, but the planner does not get a 3% increase, even though she's been on the job for six months.
That is the way the project currently stands, yes. If there's someone on the council that would like to make a motion to amend that, this is not worth the time. Okay, here it is. Well, one or two things I wanted to just run by the council, and see if I can find There was some conversation in a previous meeting about the contingency fund, I just wanted to wrap that up. See page six, Department 16, General Agent...
Page what?
Page six of the... So we did reduce this a bit over, a bit under from last year. Some council members that were uncomfortable with it, wanted to go down to confirm. I'd like to consider actually reducing that contingency, and I'm gonna ask Kelly, is this, is it reasonable, well, I'm gonna propose, I just want you to weigh in, reducing that contingency from $30,000 to $20,000, but take that $10,000 and add a line item into this Department 16, a new line item that would be less of. So... So the equipment that we would... I mean, I was anticipating we would use some of this contingency for getting equipment like the bulldozer and the truck. And I don't want to see that reduced and then not have the money to be able to access the $600,000 equipment that we have gotten, so... Do you believe we'll be prudent to reduce that by $10,000? Or is that too much of a...
Again, we have a lot of open items. That said, if you were to reduce that by $10,000 and leave it in that department, our budget is departmental, so if something comes up that we can't find any other way, there's no other way, that line item will be there and be used. But if something happens and we have to adjust, at least it won't affect us from a department standpoint. So it's probably more accurate and it will still meet your needs, should be necessary. I think it would be fine.
Okay, so with that way in, I would make a motion to reduce the contingency from $30,000 to $20,000 and create a new line item, less so, and put $10,000 in. So it's a net zero effect, it's just... Oh, should I get a turn? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do you have the total amount that we spent from the various departments on last week? We had that here, not how much. But I know we've taken it from the contingency, we've taken it from the police, we've taken it from DBW. Do you have an amount that...
It's been approximately $7,000. Seventy-five hundred, I would say.
Maybe a five, a three, and...
We did a 45,000.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
A 1,500.
1,500.
A 20...
7,200.
There was another one, I don't... I can't remember the third one.
So that was about $7,000?
Yeah, 15, 12, and 45.
Would you keep that discretion over when you use those funds?
It would only be used for that.
But would it be... You could say make a purchase without having to come up for approval, even though they're in General Admin and not the waste fund?
Is what? Yes, because I normally approve expenses that are charged to this as long as for the purpose that was set aside for it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, but if it goes in the less so line, he has preference to use it for that purpose, but then you also say that we could... I mean, I mean, it's almost... and if it's true, it just looks that not big. Then you say if the budget gets down where there's money there, it's a budget that we can use it for other things, but you just said it can only be used for less so, so I'm confused.
It would only be used for less so without your permission.
But you did say that...
The whole budget, in its entirety, is a department budget, departmental budget.
So it's putting it in the line item and making it look for...
It's to be actually more accurate, but that's no different than what we do. If sand and salt is over, we spend it and it comes from somewhere else. It's no different. It's a budgeting technique, there's no way to actually spend exactly what you anticipated in every...
Again, back to my original argument, we've never spent more than, in the last few years, 4,000, 5,000, the highest one was 12,000 several years ago, so... I think moving the 30 down to 20 and moving over to another line item, I think moving it down to 20, there's still room in there to purchase less so out of the 20. Moving it to another line item wasn't the point, why, you mentioned there was discussion about it. It's kind of end run in my discussion, I don't think... I think we've got an extra 10 or 15,000 dollars and then we certainly don't need moving it to another line item, this is dressing it up, so...
There were years prior that it was closer to 18 or 20,000, several years ago. But that said, I, since I've been here, I have not seen as many unsettled issues as we have here. That's the only thing.
Further discussion? Chief?
Yeah, just, if there is a less so line item, and again, I've coordinated with the highway director, I've coordinated with the town council on stuff that we have, and again, just to add a little bit more, we put in a requisition today for $500,000 worth of equipment. In addition to that, again, it's what we can see, but if we get notified tomorrow, the federal government usually holds us to a two-week time period. So upon notification, some of those notifications are slow, emails or whatever, contacting them, coordinating with a tow company. You know, so with a line item, you know, I think it'd be prudent that it could, again, with a council approval, when we get notified of a... We've just put in for a snow... a $300,000 snow blower in Bangor, Maine, to clean our parking lot for a year. If we get notified that it's approved, we have to be able to get it. And, you know, and sometimes, you know, again, I have no problem with you guys calling us for a meeting to approve that, but if it's in the line item, it just makes sense that we'd be able to, you know, go and get it.
Further discussion? Mrs. Riley?
I'm assuming that when Kelly refers to open issues, if they're monetary issues that could potentially wipe out the contingency fund, and it would just seem that to protect this valuable resource of being able to get this equipment and getting it transported in timely fashion is worth just making another line item. You're not increasing that department's budget, you're just making it more specific.
My issue wasn't with the line item. You can certainly create the line item, knowing that 30,000 moving over. The point is, I think we've got too much contingency, and if you want to move the line over, I think you can reduce contingency and then split contingency out to a separate line item for less so. I have no problem with the line on this, just even with the less so in there, as you can see, we've not spent, and some of the previous spent years were due to less so. I just think there's too much in there, that's been my opinion.
Also, for the committee, not just...
No, I actually...
Not just listening right now. It's always the discrepancy last... The last year.
You create a purchase or loss to some of those things.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes?
May I ask Kelly a question?
She's looking something up, you can ask me.
Well, I'd rather ask her, but I'll ask you. Kelly, was this your recommendation? So I asked you to ask her, how's that? Because the point being...
I can get it, it wasn't a recommendation. It was my idea and I asked her for her opinion on it.
At the region, we operate, when our business manager makes a recommendation, we usually, for the most part, probably 95, 98%, follow it through. So my question was, you know, did Kelly recommend it? So I have my answer.
About $10,000.
We've spent about $10,000 this year. Wait, we will, okay.
Yes, we will.
Year to date?
Year to date, things that we will be committed to take from that account, yes. That doesn't include if we transfer... he has several accounts that are over in DBW. That he was asked to charge certain things to locals and grounds or certain things. Hopefully, he would be able to make that up. If he can't, he's charged probably close to $10,000 to his department, above and beyond the snow blower. So some of that might end up, if it starts to infringe on his operations towards the end of the year.
$20,000?
No, no, he'll be able to absorb some of it. But 10 is committed right now, I would say. Close to 10, yes.
Can I add something factual?
How much is it?
It includes that, it also includes a fee for ongoing litigation with the state for that and for the pension settlement. It includes a few things, and that's on, so I'm estimating.
Further discussion?
One of the things, John, at the risk of having a problem, one of the things I want to add here factually is, because I just presented this to Kelly today, now, I'm just getting bills in from the pension litigation. I'm not out of school with what's on the agenda, and we're discussing to simply talk about the bill, no facts of the case, but I can tell you that the two law firms that we are using, recommended by the trust to do this, charged a total of $143,000 to date, just to date, just our lawyers, that the solicitors or the cities and towns are using, Mark Jacisto and one from Haley Allen, $143,000 to date, we are not dismissed from this lawsuit yet, and our share of that to date is $4,211. That is one of the things she has to consider, and that just came in. So there may be another few thousand still that they haven't billed yet, they gave detailed bills. And again, I'm not going to use details, but that's one $4,200 bill, which we saved. Tens of thousands, because if I had done like other solicitors, for example, Situate has their own, at $150 an hour, you would have had to pay me $12,000. But to get out of it cheaper and better, I think for the town, we went with the same solicitor, most of the towns are using, so it cost us $15 an hour or less, $11, $12,000 an hour. And right now, we're at $4,211, but I expect we've got another $2,000 or $3,000 coming, and we are not yet dismissed.
We haven't, we have opened...
On that case.
That's a June, so it's very hard to estimate.
So it seems likely that this year we will be close to $20,000?
It may be, yes, unless things are settled prior to...
Further discussion? Okay, hearing done, the motion is to reduce contingency from 30 to 20 and to create a less so line item in the amount of $10,000, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes three to two.
I must say, I agree with having a less so line, but I still think that the contingency fund is too high.
Okay, is there anything else, any other council members want to raise?
That's a bad word.
Well, you know what I mean, to any issues you wish to discuss. Not line item due to today's issues you want to discuss. Okay, if I'm hearing nothing, going once, going twice?
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't stay all night without speaking. Just a question, I mean, I know you guys work hard with the budget, and I just quickly looked at it and just picking things that, as a businessman, I would just start like clipping away here or finding another way of doing stuff. And this is very scary, because I almost feel like I'm in Appalachia living in this town. If I say something right here, it gets out with everybody who knows everybody, so if I just mention something, it's going to get crazy. What is the animal control officer... I mean, I drive to work in the morning, see dead deer all over the road and stuff for like days on end. I would think that would be maybe his job to tour up the side of the road or something? Okay, I got the answer, state road, public road, okay, my, you know, whatever. We can move it out of the middle of the road. What actually does he do? Do we have a big dog problem in a town with, like, a lot of land and stuff?
Chief, would you like to address that?
He can come in and I can talk to him about it.
Okay. I mean, we don't even have a dog pound, so maybe the way we sublet our dog pound, do we sublet the dog catcher for less so money? Or do I hear he's been doing it for 40 years and we don't want to like ruffle the nest around town? That's just a $40,000 savings I look at, when it's all said and done.
I don't know if that's the case.
Is it required by charter? The animal control officer right now, is it... it is in the charter, right?
I believe it is.
Required by charter?
There is an appointment, it's in the charter.
Okay, we'll forget that.
I think it is.
And just to add, Mr., when you say it's a $40,000 savings, not once you... That wouldn't change our fees that we sublet out, you know, the town, so...
No, but it... his salary, his truck, his gas, his, all of that stuff adds up.
His truck's saved from less so, it's free.
Okay. Fuel, repairs?
I suppose...
All right, I don't want to start a big thing, we don't want to save $30, $40,000 in town, we just want to argue about $600 bills, which, that I see other things. No problem, I take it back. I don't even want to hear her answer to it, I take it back.
Mrs. Riley?
I would imagine that if you wanted to subcontract the position of dog officer to Situate, plus the pound, that they're going to expect more money than what we give to the pound. I mean, that's just... And we'd probably end up, you know, with a portion of retirement and FICA and all, you know, all that stuff.
I think what Mr. Renz is talking about is something we should look into.
Kind of like regionalizing it, you know what I mean? Work with the other town, we have so much, I don't see any wild dogs running through my yard. I mean, it's just, mad cats, or like whatever they do, it's not like the city. You know what I mean?
I'm not opposed to looking into things like that. I would listen to any recommendation the police chief would have, if he thinks it should be done differently, then...
It's just if that savings or something like that, that whatever, then you guys don't have to fight about the $10,000 line item that would be more important, I would think, than, you know, someone... And you know what, I should keep quiet, he's going to retire soon, I'll apply for the job. Right around town.
You don't want it.
You don't want it?
Okay, so, I heard, I did not hear, any further comments from the council for edits, amendments to the existing budget as amended this evening? So at this point, we're ready to adopt to this budget, so I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the 2015-2016 budget as amended this evening?
Right. Any discussion? Approval of this finalizes the budget and sends it forward to a financial town meeting for consideration by those in counties and everything. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Extinctions? Yes, I didn't hear you vote.
I did.
You voted?
I voted aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to one, I'm sorry. Okay, new business? First item on the agenda is setting the motor vehicle exemption for this year 2016. So we have some scenarios that were worked out by the treasurer and/or the tax assessor regarding the motor vehicle exemption we give in this town. Our current exemption is $2,000. Our mandate from the state is a minimum of $500. So we're giving an additional $1,500 exemption on motor vehicles. And those taxes that are lost on motor vehicles will just be transitioned over and collected on real estate. So the two things I linked together, I have here some data. There are 15, 18, 19, 22, 23 towns in Rhode Island who have an exemption lower than we do. Balance are equal or above, so the majority are lower. And this analysis was put together by Kelly and... Do you want to talk through this?
Yes, let's just look at the... concentrate on this one.
This one, which one is this?
The top one. Basically, the current $2,000 rate is 2106, 2896, and 3695. Those are our tax rates for real estate, tangible tax, and motor vehicle. Based on the budget that is being proposed, if we left the exemption at $2,000, these are all estimates, I do want to, you know, every time she changes an assessment in the computer, it will change this somewhat, so please do know that. This was, let's do the notes at the bottom. This was based on an April 6, April, data as of April 6. She printed several reports, and I used those reports to estimate this. The increase is based on the budget as presented at the 4% cap. So at a $2,000 exemption, it's estimated that the real estate tax would be approximately $21.94, tangible at $30.17. The motor vehicle tax rate will not change. That's an 88 cents, 88 cent, so if you go all the way across, 88 cent increase per thousand for real estate, $1.21 for tangible, zero for motor vehicle. for real estate, $1.21 for tangible, zero for motor vehicle. If you were to lower the tax rate to, the exemption to 1,500, the estimate is $21.73 for real estate, $29.88 for tangible, and again, no change in motor vehicle. It's a 67 cent increase, a 92 cent increase for tangible, and an $18.48 for everybody who has a motor vehicle, that's valued greater than $1,500. So we, I added an additional analysis based on a paperwork Patty was able to print for me. She feels that that would tax 25 additional motor vehicles in the town. If you look further down, the next column, at a $1,500 exemption, the tax increase on a property valued at $250,000, I had to come up with something, $250,000 is actually greater than the mean on real estate in the town foster. So the tax rate would be 167.50 increase in real estate. Based on a two, a two-car home, the increase in motor vehicle taxes would be $36.95. So the total would be 204.45, which is actually less than if you increased the entire amount through real estate. Because basically, what you have to take into account is that anybody who's paying taxes on real estate are currently subsidizing the motor vehicles. So basically, if you are a five-car owner, somebody who's paying taxes on your real estate is actually paying a little bit more because you have five cars, and you're, and the town has a higher exemption than what is being reimbursed by the state. So we could go through each line, but why don't we just compare the $2,000 to the 500, and then you can see how it changes. At a $2,000 rate, as I said, the real estate taxes would be approximately $21.94. At a $500 rate, it would only be $21.30. So that's a change, an increase of 88 cents to 24 for real estate. Now you would be taxed at $1,500 more per motor vehicle at an assessed rate. Therefore, the increase in dollars per motor vehicle would be $55.43. We would be taxing 48 additional cars. So if she ran all of the same numbers with a $500 exemption, you're picking up 48 additional cars that have never been taxed, that are not currently on the board. What that would do to a house who has an assessment of $250,000, your real estate increase at the current levy, at the levy we're anticipating, would be $60. But a two household, two motor vehicle household would have to pay $55 per vehicle, so it'd be $110 more for motor vehicles. So in total, that two motor vehicle, $250,000 household would have to pay approximately $170. If you taxed only real estate, and only went up in your real estate and left your motor vehicle exemption as is, they would pay $220. You could actually have a $250,000 home with three cars and be paying an equivalent amount if you went up completely in real estate, versus if you lowered it to the $500 exemption, which is the state reimbursed portion, reimbursable portion. So it's really a matter of how you want to distribute the tax. They're both tax deductible, so you're not really harming your taxpayer's motor vehicle taxes and real estate taxes, so that's not a component, that's not an issue. It's really about how you wanna distribute. So you should know though, that, and this shows this, that anybody who has, who pays real estate in the town foster, who's not on a freeze, is subsidizing people who are on a freeze, and is also subsidizing people who have five and six and seven cars. So if you wanted to fairly distribute your taxes, you would go to the 500. But it's really entirely up to you, you can determine to, you can choose to do whatever you choose. I was asked to put something together, Patty and I spent pretty much an entire day doing this, to try to figure out how this would affect, how this would affect the taxpayer, the average person. And that's why I did this.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Could I speak to this?
Okay.
Thank you. Using some of my business background, okay, I'm gonna say this, the same thing I said last year. The council has played with this numerous times, continues to lower it piece by piece, and somehow makes the people out there think that real estate taxes aren't going up. It's a shell game. The second part of this, anybody that owns a car that's half value is $500, it only has three wheels. All right, try and buy a car for $500. Second of all, it's an unfair tax, because most, I'm gonna clarify, I have four cars. Okay, so believe me, this isn't about me. Other people who have four cars have them because they have two kids who are going to college or going to high school, and you are taxing them for living in the house, and adding to the burden there. I would really like to see you this time go to 500 and get this over with, show the shell game is over, and then you could start to explain to people why you continue to raise taxes every year, because you don't have enough revenue. So my thing is the same as I said last year, all this reasoning, all this playing with numbers, all crap. Lower to 500, get it over with, all right? And then next year, explain to people why the real estate taxes went up, whatever they went up. And Kelly and Pat won't have to do all this work for a day. Okay, that'll be one day that they don't have to work, they will just sit there and drink coffee.
Yeah, what did I tell you today?
They're gonna take it.
Me, I'll be here to make the coffee.
Kelly, do you have a recommendation?
Honestly, this is really your choice, but that's why I'm telling you that in theory, I mean, if we're gonna go personal, I don't believe in car taxes either, I think it's a Rhode Island law that, whatever. But there was just recently an article that said that Rhode Island had the highest motor vehicle taxes in the country.
And the highest gas taxes in the country.
In the country. That said, we did not create the law, I'm telling you how the law affects your residents. Anybody, any exemption you give of $500 is giving them a break, and you're collecting the same pot of money. So if you're giving a person who owns a car a break, you're taxing a person who owns a house a little higher. That's just the way it is, this is a bad news source in the state of Rhode Island, whether you believe in it or not, which anybody who knows me knows, I do not believe in a motor vehicle tax. But that said, this is state law, this is how you collect your levy, it's about how you distribute this levy now. So if you want to give everybody the exemption that is passed on to you, you would lower it to $500 and tax the people, increase your real estate for what really is a real estate increase, that is, that is the truth. If you don't, you're giving everybody an additional exemption on their car for $1,000, which is giving them a little bit of break on their motor vehicles, but that is being taxed. It's being taxed and added to your real estate tax. No way, there's no other way to say that. So your homeowners are subsidizing your motor vehicles.
Did I miss the recommendation? I heard the explanation.
That is the recommendation, I just can't, that's my personal thing.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Pat, go ahead, Mr. Rogers, I'll track this council first.
On the motor vehicle tax, I don't agree with it, it's a very hot topic out there in the public right now, so I don't think we should move that. Another thing I'm concerned about is, because it's such a hot topic, a lot of legislators right now are trying to pass bills to change how we value the vehicles, which in turn will turn around and happen like it happened before. The town will have to find ways to make up that loss. If you keep it around 2,000, and they change the values of the vehicles where the town takes a hit, you can adjust that down then. Other than that, you're gonna be cutting personnel and services. You drop it down to 500, which is covered by the state. And when these bills gets passed, you may be looking in the middle of a year, because they'll pass in July after our budget. You may find out in the middle of July, you're gonna come up with $50,000 or $60,000, because a bill passes senate in the legislation that changes how we value the vehicles on the state level, which is how we tax them. So I would use caution going down to 500, because you will, you'll back yourself into a corner.
Well, that's not really true.
What's that?
They, um. Yes, they might change it, but it actually works the opposite way, so if you already want to 500, they can't, there's not, they're changing their valuations, you know, in December. They send that valuation to you, it would be them changing the exemption that would actually impact you the most.
No, no, they're trying to pass bills to change how we value the vehicles.
But it would only be, it would, they transfer that to us in December, they wouldn't do it again. The other thing is, this is all part of our cap anyway, so to say that it wouldn't affect your cap either way, it definitely affects your cap, no matter how you do it. So this is all part of our cap. It's not, it's though we're lowering our motor vehicle taxes, and that's not part of our cap, and then we can go up that whole different, the other 468,000 on real estate. The whole thing affects our cap, it's just about how you bill it.
Well, I understand that, but again, the motor vehicle tax is a very hot topic, like, it's out there, so. I would, I would like to change the exemption on the vehicles, I would recommend and stick to, I would keep it at 2,000.
First of all, go ahead and, yes, they are, it is a hot topic in the legislation, but if it passes, it will not affect us this year, it won't take effect till next year, because Cumberland, East, Cumberland, Cranston, and a couple of other cities and towns send their bills out in May. So if they make this pass in July, there's no way they're gonna make them send out decreased bills when they're, everything's been passed. They are not gonna make it affect us this year.
So next year, you'll have to work it in your budget. So either way, it'll either happen next year, you'll be sitting at budget workshop time, and your values of your vehicles will have then dropped, so your revenue coming in, because you can't change the mill rate if you would with a house tax.
You can lower it, you can't lower it.
You can't change the 36.95.
You can lower it, you can't re-raise it. But it also.
Well, if you would, you would have to raise it, you get the same out of the loss of the value.
Yeah, but you can't, according to the law.
Excuse me, Ron, are we boring you?
You're boring me now.
All right, easy.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, my other thing is, I wanted everybody to know is, as Ron said, that if you own a $500 car that's gonna value $500, it's gonna be a piece of junk, that's not right either. Because any of the old cars that are worth, that are 25 years or older, that's the only value we can put on them is $500. We can no longer value them as an antique car.
Couldn't be a $30,000 shell.
You have, you have people in town that have 10 to 20 classic cars, and I can, and they have a zero tax bill, because they're, all those cars can only be valued by $500 because the legislation passed the law.
Changes in value, changes in valuations don't actually affect your tax cap, it just, they just alter the way you tax, it doesn't actually change your, your tax cap. It's all one pool of money, so if your valuations on motor vehicles go down, the offset is always real estate, so just to collect the same pool of money. So that really isn't going to affect the levy or, or next year the way you think. It's just gonna redistribute how we bill.
Well, my point was if you have a $2,000 exemption, then you can instead of having, you're forced to put it on real estate, and you're gonna go up in the slate anyway, it gives you room to work.
Mr. Rogers?
I kind of agree with Ron, what we're really doing is jockeying numbers around. Bottom line is the same thing. My, there are quite a few houses, whichever way you can put your numbers together, that the real estate tax looks like it's low, okay? Your lowest number, whatever you have to do to get that per thousand down low, okay? Would be beneficial, because all the houses that are for sale in Foster, maybe somebody's not that is, is not really looking at it, but when they buy it, if they ever try to buy a house and move to this wonderful town, they'll look and say, wow, the tax rate's only the lowest, versus a higher number, and once they get here, they'll know they're screwed like I am, but at least it'll look good on paper when they go to the bank, the tax rate. You follow me, on the, on the real estate? So if it's a $500 exemption, I think that's great, what Gordon's going after, yet it is a hot topic, but it's just on how they value a car, because some people are paying $5,000 on a Honda Accord that's really worth 1,200, and it's not gonna really kill us here what it is. Just, I think if you can paint a prettier picture on the real estate number for the people that are trying to sell, and the people that are trying to come into town.
It affects your real estate sales, it doesn't. And people call our office every day, asking what our tax rate is. And not asking what our motor vehicle rate is, they don't ask what our exemption is, they ask what our real estate taxes.
Oh, I had said something wrong.
Congratulations.
I also, I asked you to consider how those are collected, and if one is gonna be more difficult to collect in the long run, because the money's only good if it's in your pocket. You know, you got people that you have to chase, and we have to do abatements because we can't find them again, or they change your name and they register a car different. So maybe think about how you're collecting each of those taxes, and which one's gonna be easier or less expensive.
I did do an analysis, anticipating that this might come up. We did do an analysis, I asked Nancy to run the numbers from last year all the way through March 31st, and the numbers this year. I analyzed them, and it was a 77% collection rate as of March 31st, exactly for both years.
On the car.
On the motor vehicle.
But we have to send out someone to chase them and try to collect them and pay the way they collect them.
Well, that's on the current levy, because it was the levy that had changed last year, we changed the exemption rate last year. So that was the year to analyze, we analyzed the current levy for motor vehicles last year, compared to the levy this year, because it's this year's tax, taxes that were affected by the change in exemption, and the rate, the collection rate was exactly the same, 77%.
That's a collection rate that was the same.
No, no, right now we're about 77 to 78%, what was in my last, was my last report, I don't have that, I could look it up. It was in the second.
My inclination is to just go to the 500 and all of it, and stop, stop manipulating and discussing it year after year. What we're, what we're doing is, this sort of plays into what Mr. Donovan referred to earlier. If we're subsidizing all of these motor vehicles, and shifting that cost onto taxpayers, it's not being shifted onto the people who are on a tax freeze. It's not being shifted, actually, across every single person in town. It's being shifted to a smaller and smaller group of people in the town who are bearing a greater tax burden than they would, if they have to, because they're subsidizing other folks' motor vehicles.
Well, I'd like to bring up one more one, because it was actually brought up by Ms. Ryder a few years ago when this assessment was dropped. If you put it all on real estate, they're not gonna see a tax increase. You drop that down to 500, you're gonna bang every single citizen, senior citizen in this town with a tax, because they will get an increase on their taxes, so they have the vehicles. If you put it on real estate, they won't see it. You will, they will see a $204 increase for an elderly couple in their house, am I not correct? Kelly?
An elderly couple, you would assume would have two motor vehicles, therefore they would be receiving $36. From weight, $110.
If it went on real estate, what would they be receiving? Personally, if it went on real estate, what would they be seeing in the tax?
It really comes down to equity and how you would like to distribute.
Mrs. Ryder?
First of all, I never said that, ever, and if you say that I did, prove it. Prove it, I want proof.
I think, I think Mr. Rogers has got a point, you're going after the people that can least afford this. If somebody's riding around in a $1,000 car, and he has to pay taxes over anything over 500, not too many people have a $1,000 car, because that's all they can afford. Just saying antique cars are valued at 500, so that doesn't involve the collective. But if you've got someone, say a senior citizens whose taxes are frozen, and now you drop the taxes down to 500 on his vehicle, it's a $1,200 K car, now all of a sudden, he has to pay more money, or they have to pay more money out of their pocket, because you load the valuation of the vehicle. You're going after the people that can least afford this. I mean, a $36 tax increase on your house isn't gonna kill anybody if you have a $250,000 home. But the people that drive cheap cars usually don't have the $250,000. But the people that drive cheap cars usually don't have a $250,000, $300,000 home.
But the fee is so minimal, a $500 car, if the person's driving a $2,000 car and it's at the 500... It's on $1,500, at $36, it's minimal. You're almost... Well, you guys sound almost like it's the Taylor Swift tax you wanna do in town. You'd have told the guys with people with money, let them pay for everything.
Mr. Sebastian?
My only point... My only point was to do this and get it over with. So that one way or another, you're gonna make somebody mad, okay? So do it, get it over with, and then from then on, work in some other venue. We... I think I've heard this conversation at least four times over the years, right? And we have the same conversation every time, only this time Pantone Payne's not here. They add more in, so, you know?
Okay, is there... Is there a motion from the council?
I thought you made a motion.
What is it?
I thought you...
I made a recommendation. I'll be happy to make a motion, but usually I let other folks do it, but no one wants to do it, I'll say.
I'll make a motion to reduce the motor vehicle exemption to $500.
There are second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion?
He didn't want it.
I'd just like to say, I mean, personally, I think Mr. Renzi's point as to purchasing homes, the calculations that go into affordability, getting mortgages, go a lot on, in my personal opinion.
One other thing today before you guys vote on it, and not to be... Because I'm gonna be old soon, not old enough to get my taxes frozen, okay? But since I've been living in town with all the tax increases that I've had because I'm not of age yet and the taxes keep going up, I feel like I'm putting the burden on everybody in a roundabout way. If I'm at a certain age and my house is frozen or whatever, because... Or whichever... Maybe I should go put my house in my mother's name, she's old enough, and then I can freeze my taxes, okay? But in reality, every year, and that's no pun to anybody, that's just business and that would be a good business move, the way the town is. For the last... All these increases, the seniors haven't paid a dime. Their taxes have been frozen. And for the little bit that they're gonna pay on a tax on the cars or something, and it's only... How many did you say? How many more cars are gonna be taxed that weren't taxed before?
48.
Damn, 48 people are gonna get pissed versus everybody in town.
But I don't think it's about people getting pissed. I think it's about people can't afford this. You're talking about senior citizens, you work, I work, we make the money.
I understand, but the money...
If you've got someone who is a farmer all their life and is living on social security, $36 is a lot of money.
All right, gentlemen.
I agree with you. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Stop discussing amongst yourselves, I'm sorry.
I'd like to add a little misconception that's out there. When she says 30 new vehicles, 38 new vehicles, everybody's vehicle in town will go up. We're gonna pick up 38 vehicles that are valued at the 2,000 to the 500. Those are new, but everybody's vehicle...
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, Gordon. So my seven cars that I have in town are all gonna go up.
Yes.
None of them are antiques. My point is, is back to the way it was, seriously. If you could... The number's the same, whether I pay it on my house or my cars, or seniors or young or whatever. You guys are raising taxes, no question about it. Let's make it look good, at least for real estate value. I mean, I didn't know people actually call and ask, but that was something I should've looked at when I bought my land and built my home. I really should've, I didn't. I didn't think it was gonna be such a big deal. And really, 10 years later, not being perfectly honest, I'm out of my mind. I gotta be crazy.
People do ask every day.
Further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to lower the motor vehicle exemption to $500. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
You should vote yes?
Yes, vote yes.
The motion has four...
They're the just...
No, I just... I just... Sorry, I'm hearing you.
It's fine, John. Why don't you make it nice and loud, I'll make it nice and loud. Not a problem.
I'm just handing you, no, that'd be okay.
I have a warranty.
Yes.
EMA... EMA Director job description. Gordon, you asked for this to be put on?
Yep.
We have some samples here, so if you would...
No, I just... My point was now you got an EMA Director's seat position. I'd like to see some guidelines of what they're responsible for, so we have some parameters of work for them.
There is, um, in the job description, there is on page 138.
Yep.
And it does tell that.
It's kind of vague, like the one... Which town is this town, Hopkinton?
On top.
Yeah, Hopkinton, on top.
The town on this floor. We didn't get the vision too real high of eligibility. Each building a little more in depth other than the last one. I think they're a little more in depth than ours. So I wouldn't mind... I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the town of Hopkington's in a job description that kind of bolsters ours up a little bit.
John?
We'd have to change a little bit of the wording.
Okay. Yeah, there... I thought I sent one to you in the email, to the EMA description that...
Did you?
Um, but I think I have it in my computer still. But there are numerous ones that could be tailored, you know, away from New York City to, you know, small town Foster on the internet, in different websites. So I can put them together or, you know...
Hopkinton's a pretty rural town, but...
No, 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 I didn't know. I didn't know what you have, you know? So I, again, if you wanted something, I could put the other description.
I mean, this franchise is a little more than ours. Westland is more like, uh, the town of Hopkinton's pretty much almost a downtown in the size of business.
One last thing I have to do there.
It's nothing great, but it's something, you know, that we can put in as a job description, so...
I was just wondering if now it's a paid position and this is going to be like a department head? Are they gonna be required to submit monthly reports or quarterly reports so you can match it to your job description to see that things are getting done?
It's supposed to be quarterly reports as it is, so... Yes, and I don't anticipate that we would change that unless someone else would want it, to see more frequent reports.
And again, going over Hopkinton, it's things we've actually done in the past. It's part of the job duties that isn't in the job description of the town, but it's what we've actually done in the past. We've had preparation for disaster exercises. We've done almost all of these at town local meetings for R.E.M.A. theme, and it's almost in everyone's EMA job description. Organized disaster exercises, like I said, we've done that in the past. Direct public information, keep all resources, local jurisdictions informed. We've done that prior to major storms coming. These are all things that we actually do. So I thought it fit with our town.
So would it be your intention that we take anything here and add to what we have existing or...
Right.
Invest in some duplication, but not...
You know, the foster and the Hopkinton is and...
But not delete what we currently have or just adhere to and combine them?
Do you wanna craft something? Do you wanna take that one from our... Our board?
I got one from the board, I'll look. I'll look it over.
And present something that's in the right format?
I'll do that.
Will we take... Are you gonna use the qualifications too or just duties?
Uh...
On Hopkinton, because I wanna make sure Jai's were what we just did with the new director.
I think it's...
At least have, at least the qualification of our new director knows.
Oh, yeah, that's a little break.
Okay, so we'll leave that as a future item?
Yep.
And we'll be... A proposal.
All right.
So EMA Director job description. And if you could just let me know when that is ready for consideration. Okay, discussions with the charter committee and charter committee and advertising, so... We have three?
Four.
Four.
Mr. Lee's here.
Mr. Eve's not here, is he?
Mr. Eve's here.
Mr. Eve's here, all five. No, we have all five, welcome. Okay, so, um... Thank you for volunteering and being a volunteer. I know that all of you are sworn in. And some of the council members might just wanna share some thoughts with you. There were some things that had come up over the past year that we wanted you to take a look at. One of them is the language in the Human Services Director job description. It talks about defective people and Carol Morrow has a proposal. So if you can touch base with her, she sent that to us previously. There's also been a concern about the capital, the 2% capital that may need to be adjusted or looked at and reviewed somehow.
I just wanna know if we're gonna get a paper copy or should everybody go list out? Are we gonna get something from the council?
No, I'm just talking off the cover. I don't have anything in writing. And I don't know what other people have in mind to share with you, so, yes. So those are the two things that I know we need to have, really, I would like to see addressed. Because they've both come up in front of us with some issues over the past couple of years. Anyone else wanna share anything? Does anyone else have any information for those jobs?
You know, my hot issue was in the Human Resources and the deficiencies of the type of people. That is. But I would also like to have a look at Article 9 Planning and Zoning and see how we can address that. If perhaps having it be the same person as I had done research in the past. There are other towns that the planner and the zoning official are the same and they have a building official separate. To me, it makes a little more sense. So I'm not sure how that could be addressed. I think it's comfortable. They... If you're... I see Mrs. Ryder kind of like, you have a zoning official and also the building official, they kinda don't match.
I was just wondering, because the planning board sends things on to the zoning board. I didn't know if there would be a problem there, you know? I have the syllabus going.
The review of the zoning official is through the zoning board of review.
Right.
That's not an issue. They have... I think the functions are disparate. I think it's totally different, especially today with the planner and what they're expected to do.
But some people look at.
Yeah, I think so. Looking at...
I have experience and I feel that it's done. Very similar to what was just described in other states. So we can look at all the options.
Very good, very good. Also, I would really like if you could have a meeting with the department heads somewhere along the way, the local town hall department heads, to see what they've run into. There may be things that I'm... That none of us are necessarily sensitive to that they deal with on a regular basis. So if you could arrange something like that. Mr. Sebastian?
Yeah, I wanna hit the council where the... I brought forward to two charter committees, one I was on, that the school committee should be turned into a four-year position. Voted one person in one election and two people in the other election. Gloucester has six people and they vote three alternative years. They always have three people sitting on the board who've had experience from the prior years. We've had, I think, the last three school committees that we're on were brand new each time. So if we throw people, three people forward, we have no experienced person on the board. So if we would... They have four-year terms, three and three. And if we would move that to our four-year terms, one, and then two, the next year, we would always have an experienced person on the board. And I would point out to you, last year, oh, I'm sorry, the last charter committee, it came out as the number one recommendation and was voted down by the council and not moved forward. So it's only good business to always have at least one experienced person on the school committee to represent the town and bring the other two people up to speed. And I'll move that to these people, make them make their decision. Thank you.
Other comments from the council?
That might also hold true with the council.
Oh, that's up to you or them.
Absolutely.
That's up to the charter committee to rule search and make their recommendation.
Oh, you were asking our opinion?
Yes. Oh, yes, no, no, I wasn't providing to you. I was responding to them.
Need to make an opinion.
Yes, I think that's... Okay, and then the other thing, we have an advertisement, sample advertisement. This is drafted based on what was sent out at the last charter commission. Foster Home World Charter is under review by the Charter Review Committee. Individuals and groups wishing to suggest changes to the charter are invited to submit those requests and write in to the Town Clerk, 181 Howard Dorro, Foster Island, 02825, no later than to be determined date or to attend the committee's meeting, to be determined date, which will be held in the Benjamin Edgelling, and a date to be determined. So we're going to place this advertisement. I suppose we should just forward this to the committee to consider after the first meeting and have them fill in the dates. I think that would be better than just trying to figure something out here. Is that okay with everyone? So... Okay, anything further on the charter?
Well, it's the council's expectation on turnaround time.
Charter says six months. Charter says six months for the completed report forwarded to you for action. Unless you wanna come in?
Well, it has to meet a certain timeline to be on the ballot, so I think that would be...
You might wanna come in periodically.
Six months would be well within that. It probably... We would have to have, once recommendations come back from the... Once recommendations come back from the charter committee, the council has a public hearing and then has to adopt and get them into the state in time for the term of ballots. So I think that the last time, they had to be into the state sometime in August before the election. So if we do six months from now, we're well ahead of the game.
Could you get us those drop dead dates just so that, you know, we're comfortable working backwards? I mean, when everything absolutely has to be...
Yeah, I don't know that this... I don't know they set yet. This is the draft ad, so I'm gonna leave it right here. Someone from the charter commission can draft that.
Mr. DePaul, you might have to have a handle on when things have to be...
I think Mr. Wilson's right. I think it was the first week of August. But I can get those dates from the board of elections.
I think you'd be a good resource for that.
It'll be the first week of August of next year.
Of 2016, yes. Yes. So if we look at a six-month turn it on time and you're not finished, then it's not dead. You know, we can certainly study. It'd be great to get some information by then. Mrs. Ryder?
No, I was just thinking that leaves, what, eight months before? We would be done in eight months, probably before it absolutely had to be done. And what happens if stuff comes up during that period? I mean, it's just, it's over when it's over, that's it?
Once we have the public hearing, then that's over. So we don't... I don't think we wanna wait to the very last minute.
No.
We wanna be able to have that public hearing and get it all right. Let's just see how it goes.
Okay.
Run the first six months and then we'll chat about it.
See what comes out alive.
Well, I think everybody will come out alive. That's my hope.
Maybe, yes, maybe not.
Okay. Next item, CDVG Admin Road Down for 2011. We have a letter regarding CDVG Administration Funds. Now, the council recalls, we approved a planner utilizing some of the CDVG grant admin money as an hourly wage instead of comp time for the 2014 grant, should we receive it if the council approves bone of it. And that hasn't happened yet, so 2014 grant is still pending. This letter refers to an existing CDVG grant that we currently have, 2011 grant. There was nothing in 2012 and nothing in 2013 other than $2,000 in feedback. There was no admin money in 2012 and no admin in 2013. There was no admin money in 2012 and no admin in 2013.
There was a lot of money.
It's 2014.
2014, that's.
The last time I thought of it was 2010.
It was 2010.
That's the last time?
And 2014 is still pending?
Yes.
So right now, the only CDVG grant we have in play is in 2011. Is that correct?
You still have some housing rehab and admin in 2010, but it's almost down to nothing.
Okay, so insignificant, unworthy of consideration.
And wait it though.
It's been being used for housing rehab.
Some of it was neighbor work, some of it was the old plus for a mental repair account.
So what's being requested in this letter is, rather than accumulate additional comp time, the planner is asking for permission to utilize the admin funds in the 2011 grant in the amount of approximately $3,600 to cover her extra hours that she uses to maintain this grant. Is that correct?
More or less, yes.
Anywhere in the council have questions or comments?
I do have.
Go ahead.
How do you propose keeping track of the monies from the 2011 projected that the 2011 CDVG administrators and the 2014? Because they're two different funds. And we did approve that you could use the 2014 for administration. How are you going to keep track of the two? You don't have to even answer. Look at that.
I get back of it. It's part of the general legislative system. We're required to keep separate accounting for each grant. So it's one fund. So for 2010, I have several expenditure accounts. For 2011, I will do it, isn't it?
I understand how you will, but won't you have to do it because Juliana says I did this?
No, I won't pay it. What I have more than the, no, we will be reimbursed for it. And she would have to go back to earning comp time if she worked additional hours.
Maybe I'm not making my.
Yeah, I don't think that is your question.
The only work, the only work that I can possibly undertake right now for the 2014 is the pre-contract environmental review.
But eventually, you, if we approve and accept the CDVG grant, you will have more to do. How will you, not Kelly, keep track of, I'm doing the 2011, I'm doing the 2014?
It will just have, it will just have to be more detailed on my timesheet than it currently is because right now I'm not dealing with 2014 at all. So right now, I'm just detailing anything I do with CDVG, which is prior to 2014. If 2014 were to be approved by the council, I would just have to separate it out on each timesheet, 2011, 2014.
I wouldn't be able to charge it without it.
The state does require timesheet.
I understand that. I'm just curious as to how Juliana would go with it. And what exactly is left to distribute in that 2011 that you need the hours?
All of the, every three months, there's quarterly reporting and significant drawdowns from, well, the quarterly reporting takes into account all of the drawdowns we may have received from neighbor works. I have to go through the drawdowns as I receive them from neighbor works to ensure that they're correct. There's additional forms that we periodically receive from the state. For instance, just this week, I had to do a semi-annual labor standards report, federal HUD form for the state.
For 2011?
For every open grant until the grant closes.
And also in your letter, you say that authorization of this allocation will not be sold to taxpayer. It's federal money already approved?
Correct.
So there's money earmarked for the administration?
Correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
I do want to point out, if it doesn't go to our staff, it will go to neighbor works of Rhode Island. Because it's already been given to us. So we either document it and benefit the people who are actually working on it.
I just want to make sure that we have documentation, so we're not.
We learned that a very hard way. Yes, I am all over that because I'm the one who had to fix it and report on it. So, but that's part of the grant. So they'll draw it down through us or we'll draw it down for them. So rather than have her continue to approve comp time, that she's not going to have time to take.
I understand.
That's why we're here.
Is there, is there a motion on this request?
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter from Juliana King, the planner, dated April 1st, 2015, not to exceed the amount of $2,600.
Second. Second. Discussion?
I will be voting no on this simply because of the same reason I gave about when we voted on the 2014 expenditure spend down. If this doesn't change, I would just change it a year. My argument is the same.
Could Mr. Rogers maybe reiterate that argument for people who weren't here before?
Only if he chooses to, he's not compelled to.
Same argument. I think we subcontracted $40,000 out for the portion of the job. I think this can be done within normal working hours.
This is comp, you're talking about comp plans.
I know exactly what I've said up there before. What I'm saying is, I think this can be done in the normal hours because of the workload that was taken off the planner's position. We subcontracted out $40,000.
I would, I would like to quickly point out that I have a lot actually that I still have to do with the comp plan. I have to do all of the mapping and all of the data collection for it.
Further discussion? Are we done? All those in favor of what we missed, let us in. I thought I said aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Yes?
I'd like to say two. If you would like, we could separate that out on the payroll warrant. So you can specifically say if it would give you more additional comp. Anything, okay?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good idea. Okay, next item, resolution concerning amendments to the pilot program. Mr. Sebastian, you want to address this?
Sure. So the pilot program, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, is a state program that reimburses cities and towns throughout the state for considered lost tax revenue, revenue that they ordinarily receive on properties that's owned by certain hospitals, universities, prison, properties that are tax exempt. The state pays money in lieu of taxes, pilot payments in lieu of taxes, to those municipalities. Currently, they endeavor to pay a rate equal to 27% of the taxes that those municipalities would receive were those plans owned by private, were those properties not tax exempt. What this resolution does is it requests that the General Assembly make an amendment to that law to include farm forests and open space land. The rationale being that, like our universities and our hospitals, enjoy certain tax benefits because they provide benefits to the community that maybe go beyond what a normal private enterprise would. Likewise, farm forests and open space land does provide the benefit to the entire state by virtue of clean watersheds, open space, local sources of food, a number of things that the state has indicated are priorities that they would like to promote throughout the state. But it also does have a cost to municipalities that have a lot of farm forests and open space land. So again, like the city of Providence, it has to provide police and fire service to Brown University or like any of the services that are provided to the hospitals by municipality. Towns with a lot of farm forests and open space land see costs not only in decreased tax revenue, but also in lost future development opportunities. So right now, the pilot program is currently being used to, I think, balance the state budget. They're cutting about $2.9 million out of the revenues that Providence currently receives out of the program. So the likelihood that they would actually accept this in this session, which would further reduce the amount that the other cities and towns get onto the program, is fairly remote. However, I do think it's important to get the concept out there and if it doesn't happen this year, at least try and push harder to have other municipalities also adopt a similar resolution and hopefully get something like this passed next year.
Mr. Sebastian?
This is a really good idea. We probably have between order bond, nature conservancy, watershed, DDM, land trust, who knows what? Probably, I'm going to say, probably at least a third of our taxable land is non-taxable. And the watershed already croaked us, so that's life. But this, I think the chances of it passing ever are, who knows? But until the state gets fiscally solvent, but I'd really like to see you all vote for this. This is a fabulous idea and maybe you could, years ago, I tried to get Citewood, Johnston, Foster, Gloucester, Chapachin, everybody to form, file a joint lawsuit against the water board when they croaked us. And I'd like to see you try and get everybody else that's in the watershed at least to buy out of this, so. Thank you.
One of the benefits to this as well is when the state appropriates money for the pilot program, this wouldn't increase the amount of the appropriations. So the state doesn't have to appropriate more money to fund this program. It just means that the share of funds for the pilot program would be, I think, more evenly allocated probably throughout the state, considering those large portions of the carmel border.
And one more comment. We probably produce 80% of the water that Providence drinks, okay? And we get almost no benefit from that. And then with order bond and nature conservancy all piling on that to protect the eastern portion of our town. And most of it, we can go on, right? So you could get arrested for walking on water board property.
Are you making adoption? Do you want to make a motion to adopt this, John?
Yes, yep. Rather than reading it to the record, can you just?
Why don't you make the motion to adopt it? It's rather long and most of it is the state law and it's highlighted. If you were to change it, we'll make this exhibit attached to the list.
Motion to adopt a resolution, 2015, I agree, concerning the pilot program.
Mr. Sebastian? Okay, any further discussion on this?
Can I step away from my job here for a minute and be a resident and taxpayer and someone who has a lot of land around me? I think this is a brilliant idea and I think that's why we need to have new blood on the council sometimes. And I do urge all of you to get behind it. And yeah, it may not go this time, but it's going to be very close. And I think this helps buttress our argument that our land is invaluable and that we do produce a lot of the water. We don't get benefit of it, but we do produce it. And this is a good way to make it remain equitable. And maybe we can broach other towns and other legislators, other boards, to help this go through as something to even off and make more equitable a burden we have from Providence water.
I'd like to point out that every time we do approve a resolution, I send it, I think, if you have filed, it goes to every town clerk in the state to put in front of their councils. So it will get out there to the other towns that give it effect.
I mean, I'd love to see it, but it's a good idea. But I feel like when trust, order bond, there's zero taxes paid on most properties. Whereas a farmer that has 100 acres, he's taxed at $215 an acre, Patty?
$115.
$115 a value per acre because it's open space. So, I mean, we give it as a town. But would it actually, would we get a benefit from the, because of the water supply board where they're paying thousands of dollars already for a tax treaty?
You wouldn't get a benefit from that.
Well, I mean, would they consider the pilot, would they consider that argument even though they're paying quadruple what a farmer's paying on the land?
Can I answer that then legally? That no, if they make a tax treaty, they're paying what they're paying. State gives anyone else who doesn't have a private culture, they're not going to get any benefit.
Order bond, because they're a 2501(c)(3).
They're not.
Conservation, order bond, land trust, things like that. I just hear water supply board mentioned a lot and I'm like, well, they're paying thousands.
No, I just, I think it's a good argument as to why we have an inequitable burden in a town like this. And that if the Providence water supply doesn't want to make it equitable, then maybe the state needs to make it equitable because they're the ones who created Providence water.
Just saying. Just saying, okay. Any further discussion? Are we done? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries in answer. I actually didn't, but I didn't hear you say no. Didn't hear you say no, so my council, you said yes.
Today's bit back, Carl.
Motion carries five zero unless someone directs.
I'm going to be using myself on my next one on the agenda, but it directly affects me.
Okay.
Resolution concerning tax relief for elderly and disabled persons. So this resolution concerns the possibility of making modifications to the current senior and disabled taxpayers in town. So the way it's currently set up, the reason why we have a tax raise in town is because the state passed a law back in the 70s that allowed us to do so. Prior to making any changes to the program, we need to get permission from the state. So what this resolution does, it does not specifically change anything at all. And sort of, I think, to focus the discussion on just the possibility that at some point a council could make the changes. This is the, this is the first step. Requesting the General Assembly modify current laws to give the town council the authority to make changes. What those changes are would be the subject of a very detailed process. Our charter and our state law provides what exactly that process is. It includes publications and newspapers, public hearings, multiple readings of any such ordinance. So rather than getting into specifics of any possible changes that could be made, this just opens the door to making changes.
Okay. Motion to adopt this?
Yes, motion to adopt resolution.
Can we have some discussions? Okay. Taking a motion on the table, that should be first and then we'll have discussion.
Motion to adopt a resolution requesting the General Assembly to grant the town foster town council the flexibility to make modifications to tax relief orders.
Is there a second? I have a second. Discussion? And so Mr. Sebastian is going first and then Mr. Donovan and Mr. Green. Okay, Mr. Sebastian?
Yeah, in 1990, I tried to do this and I had statisticians and all kinds of people work on this topic. The estimates were that in 15 years, the taxpayers, not the elderly taxpayers, the taxpayers would lose $15 million. I think to alleviate this gentleman's concerns, I think that the town has made a contract with the people that are already on the tax booth. And I don't think you can change that. But in general concerns, there are presently 10,000 people a day retiring for 65. That means the United States will be 53 million people retiring by the end of the baby boomers, okay? The town and its population, or just general United States population, if we look around this room, I'm going to guess everybody in this room is 45 or older.
Thank you, room.
So, so within these 15 years, everybody in this room and most of the people in this town will be on the other land this. town will be on the elderly in the same the tax free. He's only twenty-two?
Yeah, he's seventeen.
Okay. So, so originally, and I will, there's no legal, I'm not a lawyer, but truthfully, the elderly, and Roger Hawes hate me alive on this, so, and, and Paul Riccio, and Brad Norm, and, and the one on the other side.
Get to the point, please.
Yeah. You can't, this is a user's tax. And it's not, it doesn't state it, but it is a user's taxes. Because the whole argument that night that went before the town financial meeting was, I don't have any kids in the school, so I should be on the freeze, right? But they already had kids run through the schools. And for the most part, okay? This is generality. They already had kids run through the schools. And at that time, people helped them support the usage of the schools. Then somehow, when I became sixty-five, I became a certain prestigious citizen and got on the elderly and disabled tax rates. And don't ever have to pay back what I took. I understand all the arguments about people keeping people in their houses, but I believe there's two attorneys here. I think there's a state law that will not allow the town to put an elderly person out of their house. So, the fear that people will be put out of their houses and stuff, I would hope is untrue. And I would hope as a community would help them. But the idea that more and more people are gonna go on the elderly and disabled tax rates and pass a bigger imperative burden on to young people who move into this community. But we have a seven-year turnover, or we did when I was on the planning, we have a seven-year turnover. That means people move in and like Mr., um, Renzi, as Renzi, Mr. Renzi says, he came here with one view, and he loved it, get the hell out of here, now that he found out what the problem is, okay? But you can't sell your house anymore. Because when I first spoke about this, I said, the higher taxes go, you will drive valuations down. And we have driven our valuations down by what happened by the feds. But also, there's a hundred houses for sale in town that, that nobody can afford. And the people that can afford them, the bank owns, and they've reduced the value by half. And the people that are moving in are young people with kids, who, we just had six kids enter the schools in the last two weeks. So, when you create turnover, right, you have more kids entering your schools all the time. When you have foreclosures, I don't understand the seventy-seven percent tax collection on housing, because eventually when a house changes hands, the bank or somebody has to pay back taxes, even if it goes to tax sale. So, that, that's aside. But I would hope that you follow Mr. Restivo's suggestion, protect the elderly people who are on it, but somehow set some set of rules for people who need to enter either an income, a residency, there's about four or five of them. The attorneys know more about it than I do. I'm getting old, I forgot all the, all the other things that towns put on it. But there are many things, a way to handle this. Thank you for letting me take this time.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I really said earlier, I read through this a half dozen times this morning. And I guess my first question is, did we have an attorney write this language? Who created this section one? I ask because I've never read anything that was so arbitrary in my life.
It was done back in nineteen seventy-four.
No, not this section. Section one of this resolution.
General laws.
Yes, I drafted this language in my capacity as a council member. With the intention that it be as open-ended as possible.
Well, it's beyond open-ended, it's arbitrary. Before any further discussion takes, goes on with this, you need to have a solicitor to look at it. Because it's just, it may, at its discretion, at its discretion, some are all, may be granted, deemed reasonable, determinations of eligibility. It's just, there's nothing concrete yet. I don't know what you're going for.
And I will, so in order for any changes to be made, as I mentioned, you give the general assembly to give us the authority. This gives us the authority.
This give a blank, yeah.
Right. And, and so, the general assembly only meets six months out of the year. If we instituted the process now of even just formulating the request, that seems unlikely that we have any chance of making changes.
So are you gonna withdraw this?
No.
Okay.
No, the intention is to make progress.
Okay, I don't look at this language as progress at all.
You know, I, to go to Mr. Sabassio's point, I do think we have a moral, I'm not sure about legal obligation, moral obligation for people who are currently on the freeze, not to modify it. People make plans, they have retirement plans. And I think it would probably be overstepping reasonability to actually, to upend somebody's, somebody's retirement plan.
To Mr. Sabassio's point, I get the question's point, as we have an aging population, is that pretty much it? That's, continues to grow?
Same, all populations.
Nobody dies.
You say all populations.
Yeah, but the reality of it is, our over sixty-five problem in this town is only twelve percent of the town.
Right now, yeah.
Kelly, do you know how many, how many tax freezes we have in town?
Close to, it's, close to four hundred.
I gave you that. Do you recall?
It was well over three hundred, and I got thirty-five new applications this year.
My estimation, looking at the census data, was three hundred and fifty-two, but the only census you know exactly, right?
I think the impression that I've certainly been given in my discussions with our finance director, our assessor, number of people who have experience in dealing with our budgets, that the current situation is unsustainable. And unless changes are made, something more drastic is going to need to be done.
I'd like to see the math that says it's not sustainable.
I'm, I'm sure that that would be part of any justification of actually making a change. The specific math would be there, the specific proposal would be there.
So in actuality, there would be, I have question, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I highlighted several things because I agree. It's very open-ended. And I, listening to you now, I understand why you made it open-ended, but this was scary. I agree, we need to do something to have, we have to look at the tax reason, the tax relief. But just looking at the tax relief ordinance we have here, perhaps if we enforced what we have, we could do something with it. It says here, the date said person filling said statement first occupied said real estate, and a statement showing whether said real estate has been occupied continuously. Well, do we have people that are not living in that house that are saying it's their house? And they're somewhere else and somebody else is living in their house.
They have, they have to live in the house and certain along the days.
How do we know they're doing that?
They, my understanding is that they certify it, and if later comes to the assessor's attention that that certification was fraudulent, then there are ways to assess them on taxes that were inaccurately claimed to have been exempt. But I don't think our assessor has the capability to enforce that.
Right, well, and that's, that's where I think things need to, I think we need to look at the ordinance we have and see if it's being followed.
Well, you, you need to, you need to get permission from the general assembly to change that.
Right, and I understand what, and that ordinance also says that you only have to live here one year to get a tax. It doesn't say, in our ordinance, it doesn't say. Because I looked after we had our discussion, I cannot see anywhere, unless I'm missing it, where it says you can live in town for a year. And unless it's state level, but our town does not say it.
But it doesn't establish a longer residency.
No, it does not. It does not. So you have to go back. But I, I do feel, and I am not a lawyer, so, I do feel that it's very open-ended. And the things that I have highlighted are taxation relief that it deems appropriate, in its discretion, without limitations, it deems reasonable from time to time. That was, I don't know, it's kind of carte blanche here. I mean, it seems like it's very nicely written, but that scared me.
I guess it's carte blanche to come up with new ordinance, that's what it is.
Exactly.
That initially there wasn't an ordinance, and then when the town enacted it, and it was an enshrined state law, it became carved in stone. So there's absolutely no latitude for us to change that unless we back the clock up. The town is asking the state, okay, now, now, we want to reconsider this. If we were to rewrite an ordinance, then any tax, any tax relief ordinance ultimately has to go back to the state. So this would only initiate the process whereby we could have the conversation. It doesn't take anything away from it, it just allows the town to talk about it. At this point, we can't. So we can't amend it. We don't have the authority to.
This certainly isn't the ordinance. This language is not the ordinance. This is just.
Right.
Permeation.
It's not the ordinance.
Subsequent changes for the council to adopt an ordinance, as I said, through the procedure that were required to follow, any subsequent changes that leg whatsoever have to follow.
Public hearings, readings, more meetings. I still have reservations.
Actually, I saw Mr. Duraimo's hand next.
Yes, unfortunately, I fall into that category. In reference to what Mr. Sabassio said about, I sent my kids to school, I don't have kids in school anymore, why should I pay? I personally do not feel that way. I feel the school system is part of the community, and it should be supported by everyone. While our kids were in school, we did pay our fair share of the rate at the time. So, yes, at the time, we paid our freight. And now, in the later years, even though we don't have kids in school, part of our taxes still go to, go to schools. I'm very fortunate, let's just leave it at that. But there are people in this town, like I said earlier, I live on social security. You cannot expect these people to pay the tax rate on a house that they've lived in for fifty years, that the going tax rate in the town. They're gonna lose their home. And that's not right, after they've been here all these years.
And nobody's proposing that, right?
But they're talking about this thing is wide open, I don't have a copy of it. My point is, you said, we don't want to miss, the door is open, we don't want to miss it. My take on it is, let the door close and we're doing just fine. Where, is their money being lost? Definitely. Is it enough to make a big difference? I don't know. I don't know what the numbers are. I'm sure it makes a difference, but is it gonna make a big difference? And, younger people moving into town, as I stated earlier, older people are dying, so.
Okay, Mr. Duraimo?
Just getting back to the resolution, is this the normal procedure when you go to the state? That you given up, I don't know, you want to, you have introductory resolution? You know that this is what we want to discuss, okay? Without any specifics, this is what we want to discuss. Can we have the discussion? Okay, not can we have the discussion to raise the age to seventy-five? Can we have the discussion to do it based on income? But just can, is this the usual, you know, this, is this what you do? I don't know.
It, it really can vary. It's really up to the state how much latitude they want to give to the state.
It just, question now, this resolution, I know in order to change the ordinance, but does it, would, you have to have a resolution to change the way you enforce the, the ordinance that we have? You would suppose you, because there are some people in town where the, well, just very simply, that you would ask people to show that they deduct the mortgage payments or whatever from their income tax, you know, that they submit. And just so, yes, I am the primary owner of this building, I take the deduction on my income tax.
That's what the tax assessor's job is. That's, the council doesn't need to get involved in those details.
Okay, so.
Tax assessor's job is to evaluate each person who's asking for an exemption by her standards, whoever's in that job now, by her standards, and make sure it's all uniform and that the people moving into the town, the people that are in the town, know the deadlines, know the, you know, if there's a bracket or something, whatever it is, it's her job to make sure that the people know what they can ask for and when, and that whatever paperwork they submit is legitimate.
So she can change the kind of paperwork.
She can pretty much do, do anything she wants.
But to have a more, to have more, to broader changes, you need to get this foot in the door, so to speak.
So we can't change, we cannot change.
Right, I understand.
We cannot change it because it's an enshrined state law. We don't have the authority. Anything that can change has to go forward to the state. So this is just asking, enabling us now, roll, roll the authority back to the town so that we can address.
Just one other point, when, when I was looking through the state law that I sort of created, that originally gave Foster the authority to create the tax free, first place I went was online, they have a list of all Rhode Island state laws, and I couldn't find it there. I found it for every other municipality in the state except for Foster. It's because when it was passed in nineteen seventy-six, I believe, seventy-four, they had a separate way of keeping laws that pertain to cities and towns. So it had to, I had to actually go to, to a book, believe it or not, in a library and and.
You know, they do have things, they have ages, they're called books, yeah. I, I know, I actually have to go to a book.
But, but the point is that this has been changed in pretty much every other community since then. Whether it be a change in the age, a change in income level, a change in residency requirement, it's just, just not yet.
So my, my point is, this resolution is, would be kind of a standard thing rather than open season on the elderly. I mean, because I think that's how it could be perceived, is open season on the elderly and foster.
I thought it's written.
I mean, I, I just, I don't know.
Mr. DePaulo, then Mr. Sabassio.
Has an analysis ever been done to try to determine the three hundred and fifty, or so, three hundred and fifty-two people that we may lose, that we, that may move out of town or may not come into town? Three hundred and fifty-two younger folks might come into town with two children, and we're gonna have to send to school, and we're gonna have to pay to send those kids to school. We're gonna have now seven hundred more kids to send to school. Am I right?
So, the question is, has an analysis ever been, yes? I don't believe so. That would be something we have to be done a long way.
Okay, my second question is, is that tax freeze in the charter?
No.
No, it's not.
No, it is. No ordinance.
I would get Mr. Sabassio.
Just real quick, okay? I think I, I gave an example, and I was trying to be general, so I may have confused some people, but yes, I did those analysis when I did my report. I gave the council the five or ten page document done by attorneys, statisticians and everything else, and they blew it off. But I'll give it to you if you would like. Denise, to your point, if twenty percent of the people who are currently on the freeze are cheating, okay? And we're only halfway through the baby boomers, all right? So if there's two hundred people on the freeze, and twenty percent are cheating, that's forty people. forty people, but you have full expectation, if you don't change this, another two hundred people are gonna enter in the next fifteen years. So you catch forty, but doing nothing, you add two hundred people to the freeze, okay? That's as general as you can get, and if you can't, and I'll give you another generality, social security is built on, somebody puts some money in, and some money comes out. The freeze is built on absolutely no money going in, just money coming out. Now, if social security is going bankrupt, I wanna know how we're floating this back on the backs of somebody. That's as general as I can get about this.
Thank you.
Mr. Malus?
On the agenda, we're supposed to be discussing the resolution, not the entire senior tax freeze. And, we're talking about specifics of the tax freeze, and, and it's
He's got it written in the resolution.
The whole tax freeze?
All the defenses are written in there as a proposed ordinance.
Is it?
I've done that one.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen the whole thing.
The proposed ordinance is kind of written in, which is why I'm not talking anymore.
I thought we were off topic, I didn't see it, obviously, I thought we were just talking about a resolution.
Actually, the way it's being done now, resolution first, is a much more open way for the council to do it. In my estimation, they don't have to do a resolution. A council person can propose an ordinance, and go right through the way that, that any normal ordinance would go through, then you have to get by the state, you're still gonna get by the state. But the point is, I think this is a much more open way of saying, this is what we're thinking of, can we get it in census? I don't think you really had to do this. At least, it's a very forthright way of saying, we need to talk about this, and telling everybody what's coming, it's coming, this is what we're talking about.
Were there discussion for the comments?
Is there, is there, the proposed ordinance, is, where is it? Is there?
There isn't.
There is not yet a proposed ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Ah, the proposed resolution.
There's language in the resolution that could lead to a discussion.
Is that resolution somewhere?
Yes.
I'm a fool, I'm not gonna be old for a long time. Don't kid yourself. I just had a new heart put in, so I'll be good for a while.
It gave me a twenty-year ago.
If the heart is from a forty-year-old, and you're sixty-years-old, you have the habit to be fifty-years-old and qualify for the freeze.
There you go.
The bridge is hard.
All right, so the motion on the table is to adopt this resolution, to send to the state, asking us for authority to revise the senior tax freeze, senior and elderly tax freeze ordinance. Vote will allow this to go forward to the legislature, is there, and further discussion?
Yeah, one other thing, that's a may. I think, I understand Mr. Roberts wanted to refuse himself, but I think when you're dealing with, what is it called, large population, I, I think he could sit at the table and vote on this, because it's for a large pop, that's been some ethics things I've
I'm sure you can get an ethics opinion if you
Well, maybe, yeah.
I wouldn't, if it were me, I'd err on the side of caution. If it involved
I agree, if he's comfortable recusing, that is safe and sound. Okay, and the call for vote, then, all those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three. One opposed, one recusing. Okay, final agenda item, suspension of new applications to perpetual case cemetery program, something we've been wrestling with for a while, and we've had the conversations about the funding, the mowing of the perpetual case cemeteries. One thing that actually was sort of made clear to us at the last meeting, is that the program is still open to further applications, and this is on the agenda to suspend that. So, I ask for this to be put on, and I would make a motion that at this time, the council ceases to accept any new applications to the perpetual case cemetery.
Second that motion.
Any discussion?
There's two motions here, we
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Just to be clear, that motion does not disband the ones that we've already accepted, it just fills a line in the sand, and there'll be no more applications accepted. Future agenda items, as listed, including, we added EMA Director Job Description, we added quality of Coventry Road, letter from Mr. Chickendale.
I'd like to bring up again, and I've mentioned it before, police station, it's been on quite a bit, I asked for it to be moved up, and we moved forward on that, even the chief mentioned, putting the committee together, I'd like to see that moved out of the snowball of the future agenda item, and up into the agenda at the next meeting.
Actually, okay, I actually chatted with the police chief about it, so we'll get some Okay, any other future agenda items? Hearing none, no deal. Motion to go into executive session.